Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody here and call the Ritter Board Meeting of the Hibbing Public Schools at ISD 701, Quarter July 12, 2023, 3:30 PM, daylight saving time. One item to add right after this introduction is if everyone could speak a little loudly, louder than usual at this time for having the technical difficulties with the TV. Thank you. We will invite two Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that in mind, I would like to approve the agenda. The board, and White Director Volker, or White Director Laufman, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. I inform, I want you to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
And White Director Volker, or White Director Hyberg, any discussion?
You know, in the newspaper from the last meeting, it was noted Kathy Nyberg was absent, and I wasn't absent. I haven't read the minutes. It said Kathy Nyberg was absent.
Oh, it says it in the minutes, Kathy. It's in the minutes also.
That I'm absent?
Yeah.
No, I was not absent.
This is June, this is the last meeting, June 20.
Whatever our last meeting was, I read the, I happened to read the article in the newspaper, and it said I was absent.
I think you just came.
I think I came like five minutes late or something.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so if that could be correct.
Correct that, yeah. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carried, thank you. With that, we move item five, public comment.
I see none, Mr. Chair.
With that, we move item six, personnel. Item seven, administrative reports. Eight, directors.
Is this the time where I would compliment our band?
I didn't know that. At the end of the week.
I was just gonna say I was at the parade, as I'm sure all of you were, and the band did a fabulous job. And I was at the side late parade, and they did a great job there, too. So thank you so much to the band and the band members. So I'm hoping we can grow the band as the years go on now and get it back up to the number of students that it used to be.
I've heard nothing but good at all your support of the band, except could you add a few more people in?
I know.
It's hard to get any.
It is, and you know, I don't know if the athletes now are not doing band and athletics. Okay, because when I was in high school, not when I was in high school, my girls were in high school, which was, I don't know, like 10 years ago, 10 to 15, I guess, or whatever. The athletes all did band also. So I don't know when that changed, or they were given a message.
You didn't do it in high school. That's a weird.
Not when I was, right, when I was in high school, it was kind of separate. But I'm talking 10 years ago, and my girl, my three girls, they all did both. You know, everybody did both, who were an athlete and who played in the band. And so I don't know if the message has gotten over the years to the students that you can't do both, because you can do both, and we need them to do both.
It's specialization. Kids play one sport, sometimes two.
Yeah.
And not only kids play sports, you can break down the hardcore numbers.
Right.
I asked Megan Williams here, how many of our high school students, say 19, 12, what percentage of the kids actually participate in the sports? And I'm assuming all are extra, pretty much, as well. 10%.
Yeah, I was shocked to remember that, you know.
That's all my story.
So, yeah, but, but still, it made a difference. It was those active kids who needed to also play in the band. And I wish that it would go more that way now.
You don't think that all the kids are kicking, meaning kids go for football?
Yeah.
Kids will play the sports, their numbers are way down and everything.
And you know, is there anything we can do as a board to change any of that, or any message that can come from the need department?
Let's start at the elementary level, because that's where they're going with.
And I was just gonna say, there used to be a program where there were some instruments that band and the school owned, so if the cost was a barrier.
I think they still have that.
Yeah, and I also think that fund that he, Turner has on, that he used to partner would pay for that, too. I think anyone that's needing, can do what they need.
So this year.
We're alone. Oh, yeah, I know.
District's saying the same thing, they said they can't get any. MSP people saying the same thing, the whole state.
Yeah.
Boy, I'm sorry.
So, so we did redistribute some of our music staff. This was, I believe, the first year, second year that Mrs. Dahl, who used to be our director, is now doing band.
Now entry, right?
At the Lincoln. So hopefully, right, I mean, you start getting, building some interest, and it might take a couple of years to settle. And then the other piece is, I mean, when the band numbers have probably fell off, choir numbers are going through the roof.
And that's the other.
So the choice would be, could they do band and choir? How do you get?
And could they?
Yeah.
Is that possible?
I don't know.
Well, and that's the thing with not a seven-hour day, I feel like it could be, depending on the times, with the hour that choir and band are.
Right, yeah, so something like that, if we could make changes like that, that would enable the kids to do both, choir and band.
Worth the trying, anyway.
That is worth the try, so I don't know if you want to take that message to whomever.
I will, and, and, and I think, you know, it's a little bit of, you know, not, not that our staff isn't willing to work together, but it's, it's kind of territorial, right? If you, you can't, if you're band, you can't do band two days a week, you can play three days a week, you're gonna be missing instruction in both spots, but like you said, if they're alternate hours, and it worked out in schedule, but in Chisholm, we were allowing students to do both, and they were scheduled on the same hour. And the two staff members were working between each other and saying, you know what, I'll take the altos today, and you can have the band, baritone kids, and practice, you know, they kind of coordinated and worked out, so they could do both.
That's kind of neat.
I don't know if that's, if we're ready for that.
If that's doable or not, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, our numbers have sure shrunk for the band, but grown for choir, it seems like.
But I think Mr. Burgess, he's, you know, he's, he came in at a low point.
Yeah.
And then there was COVID, but he's, he's making efforts to bring those numbers, and he's working hard. I mean, like John said, you can't make the kids join and just make it as easy as possible for them to do so.
And are we still, I think, are we still doing marching band at 8:00 in the morning, which I think we talked last year or something, for more than now that have to work, they have to make a choice.
But they had some.
Yeah, but although it was small, I feel as though it grew from when I went and watched when they did it at the football field, like, was that last year?
Yes.
I feel as though there were more kids in the band this summer than at that.
Maybe at two years of work here.
Yeah.
Seems like it. Also, an incentive for a kid, you know, join the band or try the band out, we'll give you something. I don't know what we can get now. I'm freaking shocked, I don't know.
Sure. I will bring that message back to, yes.
Well, I just, it's funny you say that, because the last meeting we had, I just said, you know what, is there any way, when you talk about collaboration, between Hibbing and Chisholm, could we do that?
We brought it up today.
Just like the one we reported.
What did it look like? When, like, football games or homecoming games, and I'm like, we're kind of the underdog usually in Chisholm, you know, I mean, maybe they're in a different spot, but if we had it on different nights, so Hibbing Band and Hibbing Kids could go over and support Chisholm, Chisholm could come over and support Hibbing.
But Chisholm doesn't currently have a marching band, right?
I think they do, it doesn't perform like ours do, they, the Chisholm Band Director Contract has certain events that they have to do, like their memorial day event at the cemetery, and different things that happen, and different parades, they have to be a part of the parade in the summer in Chisholm. So he does put a marching band together, but a lot of times it's piecemealed with kids.
Yeah.
He's playing an instrument. His wife comes, who's the band director, and she comes and plays, just to get a band to march and play, you know.
Yeah.
And they, they take alumni back to come in and fill in spots, so they, they've got a good instructor and a good band program, and it fits, you know, their size and their school, but they're dumb, too.
Yeah.
Years ago, Carl Snyder had 100 kids in band in Chisholm, and now they have 40 kids.
Right.
You know how we were, we had 200 kids in band, and now we have eight or something.
Yeah. And there's nothing like a huge band.
Yeah.
It's so stunning, so awesome, and I would think it'd be awesome for the kids in it to be participating.
Well, and that was the thing, our band seems amazing.
Yeah.
But when you look at what happened on the other end of the range now, and that band comes down the street, it's like, the Hibbing Band used, well, I think quality-wise, were, you know, but quantity-wise, they filled the street.
It's like the Hibbing Band used to be. It's just a step back.
But we also had 400 graduates back then. We were over 200.
But we do say used to be, you may be already talking.
You may have heard of the Hibbing Band.
Yeah, right. But yeah.
Okay, discussion. And the media administrative staff, do you have anybody?
I don't believe we have any administrators here today.
Any committee reports? Well, there will be a committee report, but you just had a committee meeting prior to this on the collaboration, so on the next.
Yes, and I'll, and I'm gonna do a little summary, like I did from the last one, and I said I don't, because you have an idea of what we're talking about and what we're doing.
But we're not talking about it today?
Well, we said we can't.
That's fine, I mean, whatever you decide.
Get them in, so in case there's something that's.
Okay. We were, we had talked.
You can summarize it quickly.
Well, we, we talked about how sensitive some of these topics are, and we've talked about how, you know, we want our messaging to be clear and concise, so we're talking about our minutes from our meeting, about sending them around as a draft, all the committee members are making sure, all saying the same thing before we just jump in and, and report, so, is that fair to say?
Who's not the committee?
Uh, three, three board members from Chisholm, it was typically, it had been Mr. Rahah, Casey, and Daniel Soder. Today Shelley Lampy was here in place of Mr. Rahah, and then it's Kim, Jeff, and John. And we had presentations today from Kerry McDonald on Curriculum. We had a presentation today from Kirk Lewis on what we could do with shared community ed. Alex presented on the business manager, those services, we played some tweaks to that, and so it's still kind of in a draft, but it's, I'd say in the next month, we're gonna be bringing something to you to review and potentially vote on, and if you want to go forward in these collaborative efforts.
I don't want it to be presented to me, and five minutes later, I gotta make a vote on it. I, I need to know.
As we go. Information as we go along, and then at the end, it'll be summarized that we are doing with.
And I think that, I think people are really going into it. It's been, I think, very positive.
Yeah.
You know, it really has.
And we can do such, oh, I'm sorry.
You know, that Kerry, in her presentation, you know, brought it up, it's like, you know, in Chisholm, there's rich traditions, and in Hibbing, there's rich traditions, and we just have to be respectful and mindful of that, you know?
And we can do such things before, once we all that put together, we can have a committee that will hold me, or it's like a school board meeting, we can't act on any, just discussion of who we're doing this. So, yeah, nothing to get points out of.
Okay.
Okay, with that, we move item eight, administrative business, Sir Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I may as a motion to approve property and liability insurance renewal in the amount of $288,646.07 in 2023 to June 30th, 2023.
Motion, support. White Director Volker, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
I just want that Gallagher updated, I thought it did that information, so we could , and why, yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carried, thank you.
Item B is a motion to approve the FOI 24 Long-Term Facility Maintenance 10-Year Plan as presented. This is annual requirement to be ordered by July 31st, altering our plan for the next 10 years of our long-term facilities, making certain, I work with Tyler Rick a little bit, and use this as a general guideline on how we, on Alex's Long-Term Facilities.
Yeah? Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. So I believe you took a percentage, a dollar amount, of our long-term facility maintenance, and invested that in our football field project. You're still okay from a long-term facility?
Yeah, we're still okay. If you look at the fund balance projection, it does, it does spend down over the next couple of years, but starting in fiscal year '25, and then into '26, a lot of debt expires into that variable backup, and it is, you know, driven by enrollment, so that's.
As long as we still have enough to maintain our, just the other projects that we need to.
So I think, I mean, it's safe to say, maybe you say what you think, Alex, also, but I think it's safe to say that we have a good plan to maintain our buildings and also maintain fund balance or reserve in case we have an issue. So we could easily jump in and do more projects and spend down that reserve, but we, we just want to be cautious in case something happens that isn't covered by insurance, or it's no emergency, or a roof, or something, we just want to have, be ready for it, so.
And we did spend a little bit of that fund balance last year. I don't know, we might have to spend a little more, so this restoration one on here.
Correct. But yeah, that's what we're pressing.
Is there a motion? Support. White Director Volker, support White Director Hyberg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carried, thank you.
Item C is a motion to approve policy number 515.5, cold roads indication.
Home.
Support.
White Director Volker, support White Director Hyberg. Any discussion?
Yeah, so I attended the webinar last month, and at that time, MSP didn't know what the definition of school site was, and I meant to email them to see if that had changed. The question came about, you know, do you make the assumption that it's just a school site as a school building, but it was brought up, you know, what about the football field? What about, you know, when you're on these.
Away trips and different.
Yes. And like I said, I, I meant to email them to see if that had gotten any clarification. Do you happen to know if that was clarified?
Well, so they're, they're leaving that up, that's a local decision, on those away trips and outside fields and different facilities like the baseball field, but we do have a traveling AED that goes on bus trips, and this NARCAN would accompany that AED on his trips, that's our plan. Well, we had, just so you get the whole, and I know you know it, but just to get the whole timeline on this, right, the legislature finished on, I believe it was May 23rd, it was their last day. I don't think we even knew what happened down there, probably, probably till about the middle of June, where you really kind of started to decipher it. And then this requirement is a July, was a July 1 deal, right? You had to have NARCAN in all your buildings, you had to start working on your plan. So what, the meat of this here that we're, that we're approving today still is gonna need some fine tuning at the procedure level with the nurse, and we haven't had everybody trained yet, who are we gonna train, what's that look like, but I would like to see it travel with our AED just as, just in case, just to be on the status side, so. And then we currently now have two doses at every site, every building site, and then that meets the requirement of the law today. So we're, we're okay today, but we're gonna have to dig into this a little bit further at, at building level, how we manage it, nursing, secretaries, all of that type of thing, so.
Is our insurance company coming to play on this stuff?
No, I'm sorry, I said insurance.
Well, I just wondered, because they didn't have a sudden reinsurance, but.
No.
No. It's that.
Yeah, I can address the athletic stuff, I'm actually, I don't see on key 5, but it's on vacation for July, so I'll just worry on the thing on that when it gets back in office, because I am the NARCAN person for this area. I've worked with the college, a couple of the college systems up here, and it's one of the people I've utilized, so one of their AEDs on campus, and I'll add NARCAN, so they create stickers that go, both the AED and the wall saying that NARCAN is inside that AED, so. We're going to be kind of spread around, but they, you know, got another few supply out, spoke us through there, we got 400 doses.
I'm really, you know, I'm not experienced, but you said we've got two doses at least at each site.
That's four, two doses to each kid, right?
I was just gonna say, because you hear stories, and sometimes, don't you administer, like, multiple doses at one time?
The concept behind NARCAN, and we'll be working with, this college, it does all the training in the fall.
Okay.
They'll make a training, they always have a training for step, and that.
Okay.
I'll be doing NARCAN training, but one of the first things you do have to do to NARCAN is call 911, you get some ambulants on, or, so you don't need to have a lot of doses, or the ambulance is like.
And the procedure in our plan is that you must call 911?
Yes. And that will be explained in the training, in the training.
I thought I read in here, and maybe I'm wrong, but I thought, you know, when you talk about putting it with the AED, you know, that's signed for travel, but we wouldn't do that around this tour, because I think, I thought I read that it has to be in a secure location, just so there isn't, you know, people stealing it, or, you know, using it improperly, is that correct?
Correct, so, um, yes, so, it's interesting, you know, in the law and in the statute and the language, they, they basically direct districts to not advertise where it's, where it's being kept, and like Jeff's saying, you know, stickers on the wall, and signs, and lights pointing, we've got to kind of figure that all out.
That would be appropriate here, but we could have it at the athletic director's office.
Oh, yes.
The nurse's office, the primary office.
So it's labeled, but not in the hallway and supervised, yes, again.
It needs to be a prominent spot in the office, so everybody in the office knows where to have, like, everybody that's training, I mean, training, I do train, train thousands of people on it, and it's.
Is it minimal, the training?
More than 20 minutes, probably.
Yeah.
Like, we could do it four hours if people want, but.
Yeah.
You go out on a couple of side lanes.
Very good. Keep us posted on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carried, thank you.
Item D is a motion to approve the Business Associate Agreement between ISD 701 and North Homes, for 2023, 2024 school year.
Some.
Support.
White Director Hyberg, support White Director Volker, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carried, thank you.
Item E is a motion to approve Professional Service Agreement between ISD 701 and North Homes, for 2023, 2024 school year.
Some.
Support.
White Director Laufman, support White Director Hyberg, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carried, thank you.
Item F is a motion to cancel this optional school agreement for July 19, 2023.
Chair will support. Make a motion.
Support.
Support White Director Ward, any discussion? Hearing none, everybody have a little on somewhere, and all in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye. Motion carried, thank you. With that, we move item nine, discussion items, anything?
I just wanted to mention, I noticed in those emails, and I think it's the NEA workshops, is that correct, that we get emails on?
Yeah.
I noticed that Mr. Turner was a speaker on diversity, and he was, he was speaking today, so I just thought it was nice to see somebody from our local district being a speaker for the whole state at least.
Where was he speaking? I'm sorry, I missed the first part of it.
I don't know where it actually was, I think it was just, you know, where he.
I can't remember where it was.
Doesn't he have a company? I thought he had a company.
He works at Crawford, that's the Human Rights Officer for the City of Duluth, they do, do some trainings and do some work, and, yeah. Can you help us hold on to some of the things that we've done? Kerry, Kerry, help me, it's the, the promise is you, the promise is you is their message.
Because I think there's like a total of maybe 16 or 18 speakers throughout the whole month, 13 months, and I recognized that he was there, and then jumped in, and just, I thought it was really special to see, like I said, somebody from our district for the whole state.
But I, I don't know if that's a reference of our district, is he for that?
I don't.
I mean, it could be his company.
It could be, I mean, it's, it's a tool.
But it is still cool. It's still cool, yeah.
I think he's a talented person, I mean, I think we're fortunate to have him.
He's been there for years.
He was at the college a short while back, and he and Mr. Crawford both doing a presentation and leadership, and youth leadership, and includes students from throughout, at least Norman and his son are being announced, so, unfortunate.
Give us some exposure.
Yeah, I have something, too. It was, okay, go ahead.
So I just want to follow up on the collaboration, potential canceling of the 19th, do you, what technical schedule are you looking at to get together and?
The next one will be August 8th, that took me on the board.
Is that a committee or a joint?
That's a collaboration.
That's a committee, right?
Yeah. One, two.
I'll send you that.
So us non-committee members are not gonna hear anything, so when?
Well, you got my update I sent after the last meeting, correct? I kind of talked to Volker, I'll, I'm gonna do an update.
So we're gonna receive things email.
You'll get an update each meeting, yeah. And you can call me anytime if you have any particular questions.
Well, I will.
Okay, great driver.
Yeah, I had something, I'd like to discuss our Career Academy Director and the status of our Career Academy. You know, the, is that, isn't that a college? Everyone's looking at me like I'm from Homer's Maze.
Is that a question?
He, well, I think it needs to be discussed, and I think the board needs to be updated on what the status is.
Oh, okay.
Our director now is a business owner, and I'm not mentioning names or anything, but I don't know how you can do, be a business owner of a busy full-time business, also have another job, and then also be a career academy full-time person. I guess I'm just questioning how that's gonna work out, and also, yeah, just the status, I mean, where, where are we going with this? It's already July.
Well, Clippers and higher and other people to work.
Okay, who do we have here?
I would, you're saying if they.
Are they coming back for the fall, or are they not? What date will we know that by? I mean, I, I don't think that it's fair for our board and our district to be left up in the air at the last minute and not know anything about this. This is a full-time position.
Well, this individual is also gonna be teaching, right?
Okay, so teaching, doing our Career Academy, owning a new full-time business, and doing something else on the side, another business on the side, I'm aware of, working on the side, so how is this possible? And I don't think it's okay. It's not okay.
All I can say, Kathy, is our, Mr. Brown is a contracted teacher at the district, he's on a continuing contract, tenured teacher, he is returning in August.
To teach.
To the, to the, to the, to my knowledge, I haven't heard otherwise at this point.
To teach. So who's doing the Career Academy stuff?
Well, he's got a full-time job with us, and two, two hours would be teaching, I don't know what those hours are, two hours would be teaching, and then the rest would be Career Academy, so unless he resigns, or we do something, or, I don't.
Okay, good to know, I didn't know that. Okay, so then, do we have a policy about people having outside things they do on a full-time basis?
I think he has an assistant, too, that's been working.
That he went ahead and.
Jennifer's in the back, she's in the room.
Oh, there's her.
That he went out and got the rent money to help us set the cost for that, but, okay, and talking to Mr. Brown, he has full confidence in the people that are gonna be running it if he's not here.
If he's not here, we'll have to revisit what we do with that role, but I don't have it, I don't have anything in front of me that says he's not gonna be here today, I'm just assuming he's coming back until I hear otherwise.
That's an O, I didn't know that.
So in the contract. So in the contract, I should know this. What is the expectation, or if you're gonna give notice that you're, is it by a certain date? Is it, you have to give X weeks' notice?
Well, so, you know, really, really, it's, it's a, there's a two-week notice for all of our employees.
That's it, just two weeks?
Well, I mean, there, there are some, af- after a date in August, I believe it's August 15th, if a, a, a school board could say no to, to a resignation, because we, we planned for you, we built a schedule around you.
Oh, yeah.
But the reality of that is, are you really gonna, do you really want somebody working for you that maybe doesn't want to be?
Yeah.
That's not a good fit, so who would do that, just, you know? But I can see if you're, if you're a special education teacher and you decide at the last minute you're gonna go to another district, and we might not agree with that. We might not accept your resignation, because you're leaving us in a lurch, so. But, but yeah, back to your question, I mean, I don't have any indication that, that, I don't have any paperwork or any email or letter from Mr. Brown that says that he isn't returning as of today. We did talk about, he, he, that, that might be something that he chooses, but we haven't had that conversation yet.
We did discuss a several meetings of it, and we did say that he was gonna teach two hours.
Yeah, but that was not for sure, right?
Well, yeah, that's for sure.
It's in the schedule, yeah, it's built.
I thought you were offering math teachers overload or something.
Well, if, if, for instance, if Mr. Brown for some reason wasn't here in our district, then we would have to.
Oh, but I thought you had already offered teachers overload, oh.
I don't believe so.
Oh, okay, I don't believe so.
And I think there's a lot of teachers that have other side jobs, you know, and I don't, I don't think we can say you can have it, you can't have it, you know, if they make it work.
Your, your job interrupts or something, that's, that's not gonna work, I think.
We don't have to like it. I don't like it. I'm just gonna say that. I don't like it, when teachers have big other responsibilities outside of the school, and they're also our teacher that we're paying, we're giving benefits to, we're giving pension benefits to, we're giving da, 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 and they're doing something else. I, I don't think it's possible for a human being to be spread that thin.
Well, we don't want to hold him company, he's got a business, but I mean, how many hours does he realize that they're working there? My son has a business that works full-time. He hired somebody running for it. So he doesn't work one.
Yeah, and, and you're right, Sarah, that I don't think we can control it. But I don't have to like it, is all I'm saying. And I don't think it's right, so. That's all I'm saying.
White Director Volker? I just had one other thing, what we talked about a few minutes ago about Narcan. If anybody wants it, or in community, or board members, or staff here, all they have to do is ask me, see me on Facebook, or my phone number's on the website, or the school board website, you can call me. And anybody else, there's no cost for anything, I bet, so.
Thank you. A motion adjourned. Without objection, meetings adjourned, it's all due. And thank everybody for coming here. Again, that's a nice sound.